Discussion out of, uh, relative to provide retirement and telecommunications debt. This is Larry Rana.
Yes, sir. Uh, just a quick overview of this. You recall, uh, 2009 or 10, somewhere in that timeframe, we, uh, let a 20-year note to retire, uh, the remaining debt that we incurred as a result of the city debt. Uh, council authorized city manager to renegotiate, uh, interest rates and loans with our various different lenders, and we did that. But before I get there, this was the original, original. Can you turn your flashlight over for a second, guys? If you can't see the screen, if you want to move over to the right here or to your left, uh, feel free to do so. But the original four-year term we've mentioned on total principal and interest had $6 million in principal and about $4.5 million in interest. Well, y'all authorized, uh, city council authorized the management to go back and renegotiate these loans, and we did that, uh, last year, and we were able to rework the loan from a 20-year note at five and somewhat percent interest down to a five-year loan at three and a quarter percent interest, and it saved us $2.9 million, and that enabled us to go from a 20-year note down to five years. Okay? That's a good thing. But now we have a better idea. We want to pay it off. Um, currently, we have, uh, let me back up from that. In the SPOS 5 referendum, citizens of Tifton voted to, uh, allow $4.5 million of the SPOS referendum to go retire telecommunications debt. By doing that, that actually dropped the, the monies that we were going to have to contribute from the various different funds, uh, six different funds within the city, uh, about $4.5 million, and left with a $1.5 million principal. That's a good thing. Well, today, what we're proposing is that, uh, council allow management to use $2 million of the collected SPOS 5 funds to retire part of the principal, and over the years, we've had money set aside in all the different various funds, i.e. the water sewer fund, uh, gas funds, solid waste, all the enterprise funds, and the general fund, uh, to set aside this debt, and we've accumulated about $1.9 million in those, across the board in those funds. That is specifically to retire city net debt. It can't be used for anything else. So between the SPOS monies that have been collected thus far and the monies that have already been set aside to retire the debt, what I'm asking council to do is authorize management to go ahead and retire $3.9 million of that city net debt. A hundred and some odd thousand of that's interest, and the remainder is, is drawing down the principal that we have to pay. That's part one of the plan. Part two, and we want to make that payment, uh, March 1st?
March 1st.
March 1st. Part two of the plan is to continue to use the remaining $2.5 million that were authorized through SPOS 5 to retire the remainder of the debt. Uh, that includes interest and principal, and we want to do that by, and retire the remaining debt by March of 2015. That allows us, in the FY '15 budget, which is coming up July 1st, to not have to budget any monies out of any of the city's funds to retire the debt. Everything will be coming out of SPOS money to retire the remainder of the debt, and as, uh, we asked for a five-year retirement plan of a debt, now we're asking to shorten that to 18 months. So if y'all will authorize the city manager to execute the resolution before you at special call meeting this evening, we can do this. We can make it happen. Do you have any questions?
Just so that everybody's clear, would you go back through and remind everybody how SPOS funds can be used and not used, and, and enterprise funds, the difference between enterprise funds and general funds, so that it's very clear where that money's coming from and how it has to be used or cannot be used?
Sure. Uh, in the SPOS referendum, the $4.5 million that was voted on to retire telecommunications debt, that's all it can be used for. It cannot be used for any other project whatsoever. That's it. So you have to keep, use that entire $4.5 million towards city net debt.
So even if we wanted to use it to hire more clerks at city hall or buy a new street sweeper, we can't use that money for those type things if they were not approved for?
It has to be exactly what the referendum called for.
Okay. And that citizens voted that?
That's right.
And then go back and explain general fund dollars and where that comes from, and enterprise fund dollars and where those come from, so that it's clear, because I don't know that everybody necessarily, unless you look at this stuff every day, you don't necessarily know what the difference of those two things are.
I look at everything.
I know, we, we all do, but, but I want everybody to understand, so explain that.
Sure. Okay, general, this, the remaining $4.5 million of debt that was left there is spread across all of the city funds, and when I say city funds, I'm talking about the general fund, which is your property tax dollars, uh, the, uh, water fund, which operates strictly off revenue that's generated within the fund, sewer fund operates strictly off revenue generated within the sewer fund, the gas fund, which operates strictly off revenue generated within that fund, solid waste fund, and then we have the service fund, which all of the funds pay into. So the monies that were set aside in each one of those funds, it was called bandwidth connectivity, that was the line item name in, in the budget, that money has to be used to retire city net debt, because that's what council voted on when they approved the budget to do with that money, and that's where we are with that. Is that an answer to your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood where that came from.
And that's the share of the fiber connectivity for all?
That's correct.
Funds.
Okay. Very good point, Lois, thank you very much. Uh, the reason that it's spread across all of the funds is when city net was originally built, it was built to support the entire city, uh, and all of the different departments within the city. That's why it's dispersed across all the different funds that the city has. Are there any other questions? I can't emphasize enough, this money is not coming out of general fund dollars. What we take today, we will never have to take from any of the funds again, if this plan's approved.
Larry, I want to thank you for doing what you did, because this has been great to get this debt retired, get this off.
Get that money off my back.
I think it's a home run, it's a no-brainer.
Well, it was a commitment, but I think all of us have said publicly that we want to retire as much debt as quickly as possible, and I think that's been good source of the taxpayers' money.
Not only his debt, but other debt.
Yeah, other debt.
We went through another spreadsheet a few, few months ago, other debt that we've had to retire, so thank you, Larry.
I agree. Your question.
Any other questions? Okay, please.
Now we have a discussion of the Gateway Arts Grants. We should get the guests, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. In your package, you will find documents for a gateway grant. As you guys know, we just completed a streetscape on, um, First Street extension in some of our areas and on Third Street, and we have some upcoming streetscape improvements to continue. We've actually applied for a gateway grant to actually supplement some of those other streetscape, um, opportunities that we have coming up. You look in your packet, you'll see that there are some pictures showing you exactly where those areas are going to be. The grant is actually topped at $50,000. Our budget is coming in a little bit under $35,000. There is no monetary match for the city. The requirement is that the city does have to maintain upkeep for these areas that we're actually looking for money for. Today, we're asking if city council will approve the signage of a resolution and the memorandum of understanding. I think Rhonda has those original documents for the mayor to sign, or his, his designated assigning. Are there any questions?
So that'll be on the agenda for March 3rd for actual action.
The grant is actually due on the 28th, which is next week.
Who did the designing of the, uh, where the trees and curving, where were that?
We actually, um, employ, um, a consultant by the name of AMAC to do that. They've actually been with us for a few years now. They started streetscape 2 with us. They've been the consultants to do the current streetscape, and we're looking to, um, actually work again for the next phases as well.
So during their process, they made sure that any of these trees, bushes, or curvings are not going to cause any sort of, uh, issues with visibility when making returns?
Absolutely. Since this is, uh, funds that come from the port, the transportation, that is a part of their requirement. Uh, one of the things that they look for are things like environmentals and other types of things to make sure that it does not have those kind of impediments.
Mr. Terrell, I think we can go ahead and add it to the call agenda. Um, it's already on the workshop, and it's not a matter of real significance, and I think that's the dividing line. Um, if it was something that was a significant input, uh, and required a lot of additional input, I think it would be a problem to add it.
And the total amount, just 35,000?
Right. We, we were going to, as you know, we always show you out after the top dollar, but when we looked, talked to the consultant and spoke with Danny, who's a part of the street department, um, and looked at the actual cost to actually implement those trees, that's the cost that we came up with. We initially were going to look at the commerceway area, but because of the requirement of the grant, the department of, um, the right of ways, and those kinds of issues, we had to find other areas that were actually approved.
Do you need any other, I noticed the Heritage Foundation has provided a letter of support. Do you need any other letters of support?
Um, if you can get another letter, we're actually working on others. We have until next week to get those. If you can get those to me by Wednesday, that'd be all.
All right.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, discussion. Okay, discussion of pension plan, called, it's called COOPA.
We have an amendment to the pension plan. Uh, we've been working with Patty Keister, who is an employment benefit lawyer in Atlanta, and we've worked for her, with her for several years, um, specifically on the early retirement plan that we did in 2010, and making sure our pension plan, uh, is filed with the IRS in timely manners with the amendments that they need to be. In going through the plan, um, the IRS has requested that we add to the plan, um, number one is a section or a definitional compensation as it relates to fringe benefits. Uh, section 132 F4 talks about fringe benefits, specifically transportation fringe benefits, and giving participants subsidies, rewards, transportation, such as a transit system or monetary parking allowance, uh, that does not pertain to the city of Tifton whatsoever. However, uh, the IRS requires that to be in all of their pension plans, for us to have a qualified pension plan. It's just something we have to follow. Um, it was, some of these amendments should have been in there way before any of us were ever with the city. Um, it just had not been caught, and, um, now that we are trying to get our filing and our amendment up to date or to, uh, in compliance with the IRS, they are going back and letting us know all of these amendments that we did not have in there. Um, and of course, I included an email from Chuck Carr that kind of explains it a little bit more, and, you know, his words are, has nothing to do with the city of Tifton, it is, you know, we do not do it, but it has to be in the plan. Um, number two of the ordinance talks about the IRS code 415B, and that limits the annual benefit that can be accrued or paid to a participant under a defined benefit plan. Um, for the year 2014, that limit is $210,000. We will never pay that much to a participant. It doesn't pertain to us, but the IRS requires that wording be in our plan, and so we are just requesting that this ordinance be passed to, uh, amend the plan with those wordings so that we can get the IRS filing, um, and hopefully, uh, reduce, um, Ralph Powell, let you pick up from there, reduce damages.
Yeah, I spoke with Patty about this. She's, of course, the legal expert in this area regarding to benefits, and in about 2010, the IRS made the determination that you had to send, or nine, you had to send into them a request to get your qualified pension accepted, and they would submit letters of acceptance. Well, that was really the first time that they were really looking at all of these plans, and when you send them in, they don't just look at the plan that's submitted to them, they look all the way back, and they have found that there are not, there were, uh, plans back in 2001, uh, that were not in compliance, and, uh, these are the provisions that have to be, technically, when they amend anything on the qualified pension plans, you've got to amend your plan to put those amendments in there, and you have to do it in a timely fashion. Uh, the IRS really typically didn't look at that, uh, previously until about 2009, 2010. Now they do, and, uh, so when we submitted, when we submit this, there will be some sort of a, uh, settlement that you'll have with the IRS, and, uh, as is many times typical with the IRS, when something's not done in a timely fashion, there will be some sort of penalty that will be involved. What that is, is unknown, because they won't disclose that to you beforehand. Uh, the estimate from Patty was, was somebody else that she has dealt with before, it's been around $5,000. So there will be a penalty for this, even though it doesn't even apply to us. But since it wasn't amended in a timely fashion, which many people are in this same situation, they're going to exact a, uh, settlement promise. Um, it wouldn't be the first time they've done something like that, so. There's a lot of people, I think the state had to pay one, uh, for a very similar situation on their qualified pension plan of about $50,000. Of course, theirs was much broader, you know, and had been going on, I think, for a longer period of time, since about, I think in the eighties sometimes, so. I'll say, this is, is certainly a decision that the council has to make, but at least coming from Patty, there really is not an option.
I was gonna say, I don't think we've got any options.
All, all you're going to do is extend the period of time that they can add a penalty to it.
So if it's the pleasure of council, it would be appropriate to put this on the consent of the, of the March 3rd meeting?
I don't see that there's really an option. Certainly, it can be discussed, but, uh, if, as far as whether it gets passed or not, it would be very dangerous not to pass it.
Thank you, wrap you up again. For BDA, let this provide amendments to bindings and appointments for board members for other purposes. Ralph Powell.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I, uh, this, uh, should look very similar to Rob's handwriting, because, uh, Mr. Wilmot is the one who drafted this, but, uh, in his stead, I will try to explain as best I can. He has basically taken a, uh, the law that is required, and it's right here in the big black book, um, that is required for the DDA, and he's just put it in a resolution. Uh, the, the format of it, the way that the directors are elected, every single thing that is in here is actually statutorily required. It's not, once again, really not optional. It's very, very specific. I was reviewing it today, and reviewing it right before the meeting, and, and Rob's really just put down in here exactly what statute requires. So that's the, uh, I think to, and I believe, uh, Larry, that, uh, one of the, the issues that was on here, that some of this has already been done, is that right?
Yes, sir. The Downtown Development Authority has already held an election to reappoint, uh, members to the board, and they've done it in accordance with state law.
And I think that, uh, so it's already, the process has already started, but obviously you want on your books the right way that it's supposed to be done going forward anyway, so I don't think that would make any changes to what he has drafted. Any questions?
Well, the other, I want to be on that topic, is the map. Uh, council's had, had rather weekly meeting, uh, to determine the Downtown Development Authority area, um, and, uh, we have received a, a copy of a map that outlines the consensus, if you will, of the area that DDA apparently deems appropriate as the Downtown Development Authority area.
Wait a minute. Consensus means agreement. I'm not in agreement, so I just want to, I'll insert that now, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Let me, let me finish, and then I'll shut up. Uh, the, uh, it is within the sole authority of city council to determine what is the DDA area. So that said, uh, council will admit, you can have your say.
I know, no, I'm just saying, I just don't want her to, to say consensus, to me, means we're all in agreement, and I'm not in agreement with the map. That's all. I just wanted that, so that's all.
The statement that Larry just stated is correct, as far as the law is concerned, the, the city council has the authority to, to define exactly what those parameters are of the, of the DDA, so they have the ultimate authority to make that decision.
It'll be on the March 3rd agenda.
It will be on the March 3rd agenda. I think there probably is some discussion on that, March 3rd, so I won't even ask them to put that on the consent agenda. Okay.
Let that sit. Move that along. Larry, discussion of the sponsorship for the National Golf Association Tourman at Spangio Gap, Dr. Club?
Yes, sir. Uh, this is an event that has been here once before, I believe, and, um, is coming up again. What's happened is the tourist association has sent us a request to participate in the sponsorship of that event. It's a very good event, it's happening March 3rd through March 9th. Uh, this is not unlike other events that have occurred around town, but, uh, unfortunately, um, and I'll defer to Mr. Powell on this, I don't think we can provide monies to sponsor these types of events legally, and Ralph.
Yeah, the constitution of Georgia prevents any what's called a gratuity of public monies. In other words, you can't go out and take public funds and decide you're going to give it to a private person or a private entity just because they're nice folks. Uh, the, the constitution just doesn't allow that, and specifically, their language is, is that they don't allow donations, they don't allow charitable, uh, any kind of charitable donation, and they define it as that, uh, is a present, a gift, a voluntary transfer without consideration. So you can't just turn around and say, "This is a good cause, so we're going to give some money to it." Uh, it does violate the constitution if you do that, so I, it is, like, certainly, I've done some research and pulled some cases, and they don't, you know, cases in Georgia don't talk about a golf tournament, uh, that's against the, uh, against constitution, but there are some analogies close to that where they say, "No, you can't do that," so I think that the argument could certainly be made, that that would be considered a gratuity.
All right, uh, Larry, you up again, reporting the bid for the 2014 Elme?
I know, I did that just for your question. Uh, Elme, uh, it used to be called the LARP program, the Local System Resurfacing Program, is now called the Local Maintenance Improvement Program. Okay, thank you. Afternoon. Uh, we receive these monies every year. Last year was 147,000, this year was 167,000, it went up a little bit. Uh, it's been, for the Elme projects that we chose this year, we have, the Central Avenue is, if you live, the Central Avenue between 26th and 28th Street, it is a disaster, uh, if y'all approve, this will be on the agenda for calling me tonight, so that we can go ahead and get a contract signed, uh, if y'all approve this. I'd like to thank EST for preparing the bid documents for this and doing the homework on it. They've done, they, they have completed all the bid analysis. We had four bids. The low bid was $200,540.44 from East Coast Asphalt LLC, and, uh, staff recommendation is that we award that to East Coast Asphalt. Uh, I'd also like to, uh, comment that, uh, through the process, they gave the community, they had some input, uh, especially up on the 44th Street area, there's a drainage structure there that's going to be in the project, and there'll be, uh, the resurfacing of Beach Street, uh, from the input we received from the citizens, or as I said, we, EST got from the citizens, uh, they're very pleased with these, the changes that we had to make in the engineering project that had done, been done previously, and it looks like the, uh, the citizens are happy, and we like that. So that'll be the staff recommendation to award the contract to East Coast Asphalt LLC, and if, uh, in the call meeting, if we could get the, um, approval of council to authorize city manager to enter into and execute all necessary documents to have this work start as soon as possible.
If it's approved, Larry, when would they start on it? I know you say "as soon as possible," are you talking like it's not? Are you talking six months? What are you?
No, we're talking about like, new, new equipment, and if y'all approve it tonight, uh, we'll contact, uh, the asphalt, we still have to sign contracts, we have to get the good bonds in, or not good bonds, performance bonds, and all that other stuff. What do you think, about 10 days?
I very wait, yeah.
Some set of partners, but appreciate that whole.
They'd be very happy.
There will be a lot of happy people around here, plus my friend John Turner, sitting in front of us also. Sorry it took so long to get this done, but it's always a matter of money and timing and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, I think we're gonna see a lot of activity moving around here shortly.
Okay, thank you. I will add a number seven. Larry, you up again?
Yes, sir. I received a letter from Brian Morrow over at the Chamber. Uh, it's been about seven years since the Chamber's done a relocation guide, and, uh, Brian's been working on this now for about two years, trying to get everything lined up so that we can proceed with it. And just to give you an idea of what we're talking about, it's something that we can use to market Tifton and to, for people that want to relocate to Tifton. This is a, a copy of what the Dublin Lawrence County, uh, guide looks like, and what happens is you can, the city of Tifton can advertise, uh, like, city council is in the Lawrence County one right here, so they, they pay the, uh, premium so they can get the inside, the front, and the back cover advertising to promote their cities and counties, I'll pass it around. This is, uh, Golden Isles of Georgia. It's a really good document, and it's all the businesses that are associated with anything that has to do with Tifton that won't participate, because it's all about advertising and promoting your community, and this is only, this book, as you see, will only be for Tifton and Tiff County. It's not surrounding counties, we're promoting Tifton and Tiff County. That's what this is all about. Uh, what I would ask at this time, if it's the pleasure of council, and they would like to participate in this, is for the premium products, I would like to see, uh, in this document, or in this pamphlet, the, uh, the city inside the front cover, so we can promote the city of Tifton. We've been talking about marketing Tifton for years now. We've been constrained by budgets, I think we're overcoming those, we have a little bit of money, uh, in the tourism department that we could actually pay for this from. Uh, so it's about $3,900 for the premium, call it 4,000, just to make it even money, uh, and you only have to pay a third of that upfront. This will be available for 24 months online, and, uh, they're going to print about 6,500 copies of it, uh, that will be available for the chamber to pass out, and we'll get a, an undisclosed and yet to be determined number of those that we can hand out as council and management.
May I add something?
You may add.
All right. I think this is really important for us to do. Um, I think we've got to tell our story, and not only is this a relocation guide, it's a community guide. So the information that's going to be in here will be beneficial for not only a family potentially looking to relocate to Tifton, but a business or small industry, you know, it's got demographic information, um, they'll spotlight the school system, they'll spotlight the industries, they'll spotlight, you know, it's, it's, it's the Chamber of Commerce package, all-in-one, very quality publication. Um, and like Larry said, uh, looking into where could the money come from, um, this does fall under our, um, permissible activities for that tourism money. So, um, it's not, you know, it's not tax dollars from the general fund that are, that would, this is tourism money. To, again, generate more tourists, more families relocating, more folks visiting this community, so I'd really like to see us do this, if y'all are in agreement. The other thing, in looking at this, the more advertising that's sold for this book, the more content they can provide, because it's solely paid for by advertising. If you stop in the Chamber building, or hopefully we can have some at city hall, or various locations around town, say, "Look, I'm thinking about moving my business here or my family here." here," this is free to you. So, it's, it's really a good-looking publication. Like Larry said, the information will all be online as well. The membership directory is there, so people can use this as a resource guide, but it's, I think it's something that we ought to consider doing as we continue to try to market Tifton and draw as many folks into Tifton to help build our tax base as possible.
It's good for charity at Tifton.
Absolutely.
You said it was four thousand for twenty-four months?
Yes.
It's a twenty-four month...
Two thousand, it's...
Yes.
Well, yeah, about that.
It's a twenty-four month shelf life. Of course, the online version can be amended or changed at any point in time, but they'll, they'll publish enough for a twenty-four month shelf life that will be distributed mainly at the Chamber, but again, other locations as well.
The actual quote on the prime cover location, I was including the online version as well, is thirty-four fifty. If you don't do the online, it's thirty-four fifty, and you pay a third of that upfront.
I don't know that we necessarily need to do the online version. We've got a good city website that's always being improved, and, and talking with Larry about some ideas today, I think there's some ways we can continue to enhance our folks' ability to find that city website online by just doing a search for Tifton, so we don't necessarily have to do the online, but I do think having the print version is important.
Could we, I guess, if they were charged to do it, could we just apply that to our website, or is it, is it on their website? Or if we, if they, we decided to make it available on our website?
Could we link it or something? Could we make it?
I think we can.
Yes. Could we link to that? There's, there's not one, I don't think, in the past couple of years, but we've had one, something similar, I might go all the way up.
Yes, someone make it first to the city Tifton website, and then we also offer that as additional resource. See if we can do that.
I'll talk to Mr. Cecil Strickland is the person that contacted me on it, so if it's the pleasure of council, if you will authorize us to, to do this, would it on the consensus agenda, would they not exceed thirty-six fifty? It's too much.
They do all the production. They'll come take the photos. These are, these are professionals that layout and design, so it's, it's on.
Our, our really smart city person, just round it off to four thousand.
Just in case. And it shows our support of our chamber and our community too, so.
Is this okay with council, replace it on the consensus agenda?
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Mr. Rona, who are we talking?
Yes, sir. We have the Tifton Tree Board. Joseph La Forest and Ginny Regden's terms expire the thirty-first of March. We still have a vacancy from last year as well on there. I have not contacted them to see if they wish to continue serving, but that will be at your pleasure. I'll be happy to do that if you want me to. The Housing Authority, that's a board that the mayor makes the appointments to, and the only reason that I've got it on the agenda is that it needs to go into the record so that one of these days when none of us are here, if they need to look that up, it'll be in the minutes. But his intent is to replace Bridget Roberts with Shedra Miller, who is a tenant there. They have a residency representative, and Vera Shaw will be replaced by Jim Lieber. So, that will be on the agenda for the third. And then Keep Tiff Beautiful, we have, still have three vacancies on that board. Elaine Cook is serving until we find a replacement for her. So, if anybody has any suggestions or thoughts, we are continuing to advertise on the website and on the government channel for physicians.
Rona, will you contact the folks?
I would be happy to do that, yes. I'll contact them tomorrow. And that's it.
That's it.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that wraps up the workshop.
Yes, sir.
We have a call meeting to address a couple of issues. If you would like to proceed into the call meeting, we can do so at a time.
Let's proceed to the call meeting. Do we have any motion on it?
No, sir. We just call it.
It's called, call, uh, it's called, meeting called, all of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I make a motion to approve out of number nine.
Second.
Uh, it is the motion that we approve out of number nine. All in favor, raise your hand, and say an aye.
Aye.
Opposes? None?
Mr. Terrell, I did include the gateway grant application as number nine A to be considered. If you all would take that up for consideration.
Okay, I make a motion to approve number nine A, gateway grant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the gateway grant. All in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, right hand.
Aye.
Opposes? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Before we go any further, I failed to address the reason the mayor wasn't present tonight, and I've been remiss in my duties, so I'm a hand. He has been out with the flu, he's been extreme to sick, and that's why the mayor is the president this evening for those of you who may be concerned, so keep him in your prayers and hope he gets well soon.
Out of number ten?
I make a motion, sorry. I make a motion that we approve item number ten, the, for the Ilmi grant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor of the approval of the bill, the bid, signal by raise your right hand, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Vice Mayor, we will not leave in executive session tonight. We had anticipated we may have some results or some mediation that's going on in some legal cases. Unfortunately, we did not get that, we did not receive the appropriate input so that we could go into executive session for legal issues, so unless there's something else, that's all the issues that we have at this time.
There's nothing else.
I think we ought to have Ralph give a wrong.
Okay, I said, well, we are adjourned.
Yes.
Yeah, you are. Thank you.